Hey, we are live.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our monthly working meeting of the city council. So, for those of you that might have not participated in one of our working meetings before, basically, what it's just like it sounds is just a working meeting at a council. You're going to hear us discussing whatever the issue is at the evening. We're going to have a presentation tonight from Engel Berman, who is the developer that has the proposed project for the Super Block. So I'm sure most people are, have some familiarity with that, but they're going to be doing a presentation on that. So what you'll be seeing is the presentation from them, and then you'll be hearing our discussion with them. Like all of the working meetings, there's no public input on this. It's, there's no good and welfare. It's just a working meeting, you know. So basically, you just kind of spectators watching the council work. One thing that's worth noting, because I'm sure some people are wondering about this, is what does this mean that Engel Berman is doing a presentation to the council? It's informational, so there's nothing being voted on tonight, anything like that. This is just an informational presentation. Some of you may have participated in some of the presentations they did at the civic association meetings. So this is going to be sort of a, sort of a similar format. And then, we've been assured before there is any kind of vote taken by the IDA on this issue that there will be a public hearing on this. So the public will be able to provide input on this issue. But like I said, tonight's meeting is solely informational. And so with that, I guess we can, we can get going. I guess with that, we can turn it over to Engel Berman and let them do their presentation.
Okay, guys, I just unmuted you and brought you up as a panelist.
Okay, good evening. My name is Dan Deegan with the law firm Porcelli Deegan &amp; Serrano. I'm going to introduce you to people in the room before we get started with our presentation. Thank you, guys, very much for taking the time to hear from us tonight. To my left is John Berman. You guys can see and hear us fine?
Great.
Yes, you can.
Okay, and then behind him is David Berman, the principals of the Engel Berman Group, Steven Krieger, who's a principal of the Engel Berman Group. And we have Peter Curry with the law firm Appell Fritz, who are co-council on the project. And then right across from me is Nolan, who is our IT guy who's making it all possible for us. So we're thankful to him as well. So thank you for this opportunity. We wanted to, you know, I know a lot of, some of your members have attended some of the meetings we've had around, around the city over the last several months. But we wanted to have this opportunity to talk to you guys directly, give you the information that we have and how to describe to you the project and, you know, what we've gone through and where we stand today. So, you know, I think you guys are generally familiar with Engel Berman. They've got a great track record. They've built the Aqua in town. They're a Long Island-based developer. Engel Berman is in contract now to purchase the I-STAR property. The property, that contract to buy the property is subject to getting all the zoning approvals and ultimately a building permit, and also subject to financial feasibility, which is a big challenge on this project. The Super Block, which is a six-acre oceanfront lot, has been vacant for decades. The history of the site has been well-publicized and is very well-known short to everyone here on the council and to the public. There have been many failed development attempts over the decades. The last failed project that got a lot of notoriety was the I-STAR project, which has resulted in ongoing litigation, which is still out there today. The property represents a legacy of life for the city. There's no development, no significant real estate taxes, and no economic benefits for the city. I'm sorry, I should be telling you to switch the slides, right? Yes, switch. So anyway, this, that's, we're going to get back to visuals later, but that's the first introduction. All right, next one. Keep going. No economic benefits to the city, next slide. So Engel Berman has come up with an innovative plan for this project to try and make the development work for all and to break the past cycles of failure. The plan entails an as-of-right development, which is fully compliant with the city zoning code and requires no variances. Next slide. The plan calls for 438 units and three aesthetically beautiful buildings. The breakdown is 200 condos in two of the buildings, 100 each, and 238 rentals in one building. The design features and style were informed by the community input at the various meetings, which we'll get to. 10% of the rental units would be workforce housing units, approximately 24 units. The project will also include 6,500, approximately 6,500 square-foot restaurant and grabber go on the boardwalk. That restaurant would be separately parked from the residential, and also a public plaza on the boardwalk. This is a visual of the rental building. So there's one rental building like this, and the earlier image we saw was one of the two condo buildings.
Can you go back to that for just a second?
Let me go back to the, in.
Go away for just a second.
No, back, back. So this is the kind, one of the two condominium buildings. If you look carefully, you can see the other condominium building behind it. We're looking at a site plan shortly in the presentation. But just to get a sense of the aesthetic feel of what we're talking about here, you know, they're very beautiful buildings, you know, high-end finishes and. All right, now, let's go forward back to the, to the rental building. So all right, let's stay on this chart. So this kind of just shows a comparison to what we're proposing compared to what I-STAR was proposing, just to give a sense of how different this project is. Now, number one, we're going to a height that's compliant with zoning, 110 feet. The I-STAR project was 166 feet. Where the 438 units, this was permitted by zoning. Previously, they were proposing 522 units. Number of stories likewise, 10 stories permitted by zoning, we're within that. The I-STAR proposal was 16 stories. Based on community input, we are overbuilding the parking to the point where there's two-plus parking spaces for residential units, each residential unit. And that's because of some of the concerns that we heard about parking in that area, that they would not overflow from this project into the surrounding neighborhoods. So the parking is being built at a above-code requirement. That I-STAR proposal required numerous zoning variances. Our project is overparked and fully zoning compliant, no zoning variances required. All right, thanks. Just a visual height comparison. The one on the right was what I-STAR was talking about, and from the left is our project. You can see it's a, you know, very, very big difference, what the zoning code contemplated, which is what we're doing and what they were proposing. Proposal. Next slide. So this is the site plan. So on the left side of the screen, which is the west side of the project, you can see the oceans below us, the boardwalk runs along the bottom. The left side of the two condo buildings, I don't have a pointer, but you can pretty much see the two, oh, you know, I don't know if you can see our pointer or not, but that's, the, the left building is one of 100-unit condo buildings. And then the one in the middle is another one. They're connected by a common amenity space and reception area. And then all the way to the east end of the property, on the right side, is where the residential rental building would be. This is all sitting on top of the, two, two levels of parking. It's that underground parking, but it's structured parking because of the flood regulations. At FEMA, it has to be built, you can't build habitable space under 17 feet. So everything below 17 feet is basically heavy parking infrastructure in order to service the project. Very expensive, you know, infrastructure we have to get to. So you can see the three buildings. One of the noted design features here is that these, the way these buildings are orientated is perpendicular to the boardwalk. That's required by the zoning code. And the reason for that is to maximize the view corridors so as to not to block out the properties behind it and around it. It maximizes, I think it's 60% of the property has to be open from the back to the front in terms of a view corridor. So that's why, for the orientation of the building. The, at the lower part is where the, you can see public plaza written to the lower right. And to the right of that is where the, where the restaurant would be. The restaurant would be accessible from the boardwalk and also from parking. It would be underneath that in the structure below. The big, and we can go on, and you know, I have many more questions about the site plan itself. But this is fully zoning compliant. You can see there's a main entrance off of Broadway coming up. It's an inclined ramp coming up to a central courtyard and turnaround, which goes to the, you know, when you make a left, you would go to the rental and to the right to the condos. There's also parking, there's also entrances to the parking structure from Riverside Boulevard and Long Beach Boulevard on either end of the project. So let's go to the next slide. The big advantage, sorry, next slide after this. The big advantage of this innovative design and, you know, the program that's being promoted here is that the condo units generate full taxes immediately upon construction. Current taxes on the property are $500,000 a year. This property's been vacant for, you know, 40-plus years, producing land-only taxes. The condominiums alone, once constructed, will cause that number to jump up to 3.5 million, a number that's seven times the current taxes. Now, many of you actually attended these meetings, you're well aware. Starting November and through January and February, we engaged in an extensive series of community meetings, met with the various civic groups, the chambers of commerce, and other stakeholders to present this plan. We reached out to various elected officials, including some of you on this board who were just elected at the time and not sitting board members yet. We also reached out to state and county officials as well to keep them apprised as to, you know, of community outreach efforts and to break them all in our plans. Next slide. At each of these civic meetings, the general feedback was very positive on this project. And, you know, I would say that, you know, while there may have been a couple people who had had a lot of questions, you know, generally it was a very positive and supportive response. We want to make it clear to you guys, and if you attended these meetings, could realize, we always made it very clear in those community meetings that this development will require the assistance of the Nassau County IDA. And the reason for that is that the construction costs are very high for this development. The cost for the condominium portion alone is currently estimated $211 million. The cost for the rental component is about $158 million. I understand, you know, we're talking over $300 million worth of investment that we're, that we're, you know, slating for Long Beach. That's the positive side. But the negative side of it is that that is very difficult to come up with those costs, to finance those costs, and to make it make financial sense. And that's really what we've been working on over the last, you know, six months, is trying to figure out how to make this work. The only way it works and we're going to get it is with some assistance from the IDA. While construction costs on Long Island generally are very high, and we read about that all the time, and, you know, projects even in Garden City and other places say we need a pilot to be built, this site has extra special challenges that really add to the costs. The FEMA compliance alone is going to require 1,500 to 1,700 piles. Storm hardening features like hurricane glass and other features that, you know, with regard to the power and electricity and the way that the building systems have to be designed to maintain, you know, strong hardening capacity adds to cost. The parking on podium infrastructure, which we talked about, you know, we're parking for over 1,000 cars. Two layers of six acres worth of parking, all beneath the structure, very expensive. And there's onsite electrical infrastructure. There's electric lines now that are in the abandoned shore road, which run underground. We have to move them onto East Broadway. Now, it's a cost of about $2 million that you wouldn't think of. It's an extra cost that's associated with a typical project. I know there's been some talk in the past about the off-site sewer and water structure requirements. There has been a sewer main and water main that was designed by Cameron Engineering previously for I-STAR, which called for sewer and water lines to run from the project up to Park Avenue. The site, that project would probably require about $4 or $5 million of cost in order to complete. Engel Berman has reiterated and stands by the commitment to make that improvement. That improvement will benefit not only this project, but everyone along those lines will have excess capacity and ability to connect into those lines as they run up to Park Avenue. So it'll not only benefit this project, but the upgrade of the sewer and water infrastructure generally along that corridor. The development, and this is very important, especially this time, is slated to generate over 1,000 construction jobs. We've been meeting with the Nassau Suffolk Building Trades, Matt Arisich, somebody who may know him, and representatives of several of the individually units and union contractors. We've had a good working relationship with them. They've been generally supportive of our efforts, and we look forward to working with them. With that, I want to turn this over to Peter Curry, who's going to talk about some of the economic benefits that this project directed and benefit that really are very important for the project and for this council's consideration.
So as part of the IDA application process, we required to come up with a cost-benefit analysis of what economic effect the construction and operation of the project have on, in this case Nassau County, but also the city of Long Beach and the other taxing jurisdictions. So we went to the well-known economic planners, Nelson Pope and Voorhees, and obtained a report from them, which indicated the benefits of the construction first. And again, these are the direct, which is the dollar going out from the developer to the contractors. The indirect, the spending of that money by the employees and by the contractors, and then the ripple effect of that money, or the induced effect of that money on the economy. And taking those three factors together, this construction project, the revenue output alone is $415 million from the construction. Of that, in terms of the primary, secondary, and induced effect on wages, is $166.6 million. So again, the three sets of construction jobs that will come from this, it's about 1,450 jobs. That's from the construction. Once the project is operational, then on an annual basis, the revenue output is approximately $19 million. Of that, wages are about $3,350,000, and there are 56 operational jobs. So in terms of the economic output, those are your numbers from both construction and operation. The other thing that the environmentalists or the consultants take a look at is the effect of the spending by the residents of the project. And when they take a look at that, you'll see the number of $5,400,000. That's not their spending in Nassau County. What the consultants do is they take a look at certain types of spending that people will do, restaurants versus clothing purchases, for instance. And they will indicate that of those types of purchases, certain of them will be more centered in the city of Long Beach, others will be more county-wide. So this annual household spending in Long Beach is just the spending in the city. And so the annual fiscal impact of that is in your city. The actual household spending in Nassau County, if I'm speaking to the IDA, I'm going to be using a much higher number because the county effect is much higher. So this is just your city. The other thing we did, we took a look at the, the real estate taxes and pilot payments that will be made. And we wanted to analyze what portion of those will go to the city and further analyze them versus the costs that the city will have to undertake in order to have this project. Schoolchildren, various garbage and other expenses that the city will have to incur as a consequence of this project coming online. And the net positive effect of the taxes and pilot payments being made to the city is approximately $500,000. And then the net fiscal impact of the school district is more than $1,600,000. So those are, this is a report that these, Nelson Pope and Voorhees are very experienced in doing. We had them run through all these numbers, and we vetted them ourselves. We feel very comfortable with these numbers. So this is the annual fiscal impact that the city will see in addition to the household spending. You know, in the household spending, we didn't get into the sales tax or other benefits of that. These are just the net dollars that are getting spent on an annual basis.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Nolan, go to the next slide now. This is a chart which we can come back to. But this basically is a chart that plots out over the next 30-year period what the different scenarios could be. So the land-only, which has been the last 40 years, is that bottom line, which is obviously very low. And, you know, that's been the history of this property, and we're trying to change the future. But I-STAR was proposing is the middle line for the yellow line in terms of the pilot. They were looking for, you know, 15 years of land-only, and then they were a complete rental project. And, you know, ultimately, they were in upper bound for about $100 million. The Engel Berman, where we combined the, the condo taxes plus the, the pilot payment, we're talking about a number that's close to $180 million. And go to the next slide, we can come back to that. But basically, you know, the taxes that will be generated from the condo units alone is expected to exceed $135 million over the next 30 years. Condoms, as I indicated before, once constructed, can be seven times the current rent taxes. We're seeking a pilot only on the rental component of the project. The pilot revenue for the rental component that we're projecting and what we need in order for this project to work adds up to $35 million in additional revenue on top of that condo revenue. We're looking for the 30-year pilot to start after the construction's complete. The requested pilot, only on the rental portion, would phase in the incremental taxes that are being created by the rental development in years 11 through 30 with an appropriate annual escrow. So, you know, the taxes for the condo would be in place from the beginning once they're constructed. And then we would look for the, the pilot on the, on the residential, on the rental to phase in after that, on top of that, which is all incremental additional revenue. Yeah, we've done a lot of number crunching over the last several months. And, you know, given the high cost of construction and the cost specific for this development, this level of pilot is absolutely necessary to make this development financially feasible. You know, we worked with the pine here, and they worked with us. And we know the history here and what happened last time. And we really have done our best to come up with a proposal that requires the minimal level of assistance that could be asked. You know, every project on Long Island, every rental project, requires a pilot agreement in order to work. This project has extra challenges. We are trying to ask for the minimum innovative plan of adding these condo units so that you get, you know, over half the taxes are immediate, is very innovative and something that this project, really differentiates this project. Financial challenges, I touched on most of these. You know, the high construction costs, the team compliance, you know, the aisles, the storm hardening features, parking garage, the lower density, it's another important factor that differentiates us. You know, while I-STAR was, you know, all rental, you know, they were talking about 522 units. We're talking about a lesser density, which means less revenue, less ability to basically pay for the costs associated with construction. The off-site sewer and water infrastructure, the not only benefits this project, but will benefit the surrounding neighborhood. The electrical infrastructure, the emergency power generation requirements, also the workforce housing component also results in less income than market otherwise. And these, those are the reasons why the IDA assistance is absolutely necessary. As Peter indicated before, though, you have to realize that because of the condo portion and because of the pilot that is going to produce a lot of revenue, those revenues to the county, the city, and the school district still will be far excess of the incremental costs incurred by the municipalities. And that's set forth in the Nelson Pope Voorhees report. Next slide. The important fact, without the assistance of the IDA, this development is not possible. You know, we are not going to the IDA because we're trying to, because we think that's easy. It is absolutely necessary. We're talking about an innovative plan, whether it's as-of-right, zoning compliant, and one that calls for roughly 45% of the units to be built as fully taxable condo units. The plan allows us to request the minimum level of assistance required to make this project feasible. All these issues are compounded by the COVID pandemic. You know, there's a lot of uncertainty. There's a lot of, you know, to think that anyone's going to be able to best over $300 million here. And these times before COVID was a challenge, and now it's even worse so. Obviously, the benefits of such development are also amplified by this current situation. We'll just leave you with it. You know, we feel pretty strongly that now more than ever, given this economic devastation and uncertainty caused by the pandemic, the city needs the jobs and revenues that this development will generate and all of the economic benefits that we're outlining earlier. So with that, we, you know, we thank you. We are here to take questions. We can go back to any slides that you'd like to go back to.
Okay, thanks, Dan. I have some questions, but do any of the council members have questions?
Hi, this is Liz. I just have a question regarding, calling it workforce housing. Is that the same as affordable housing? Are you using them incorrectly?
Yeah, so the workforce housing is the New York State General Municipal Law defines workforce, workforce housing as housing that's affordable to individuals or families making up to 130% of the AMI. It's also the standard that's long on Housing Partnership uses as well. So, you know, given the high costs and the challenges of this project, you know, these units will be, they're below market. Certainly, it does represent a cost burden on the project because of, you know, lower income that's derived from that. But we're looking at 130% of AMI as the workforce affordable housing.
Don, I have a question. Hi, gentlemen, my name is Scott Mandel. I'm one of the council members. Just wanted you to briefly review again the issue of the water sewer line.
Yes, so the water sewer line runs from the project site. And it's a sewer line and a water line. It runs up to Park Avenue, runs north up to Park Avenue. It was previously a part of the package of benefits that I-STAR had proposed for that neighborhood, and we've agreed to stand by that. I mean, it is necessary, but it's an actual, you know, overdesigned to the extent that it will also service the surrounding houses along the way, that they'll be able to tap into the water line and into the sewer line. It gets, brings the project and everybody along that line up to the Vayn Hile Park Avenue.
And that would be a no cost to the city.
That's correct. That would be paid for 100% by the developer. And we're estimating the cost to between $4 and $5 million.
Thank you.
Mike, did you have questions?
Yeah, I have a lot of them, but I'll let you go first.
I only have like three questions.
Sure, go ahead, Karen.
Okay. Can you please tell me what the AMI is for Long Island? Because I asked Long Island Partnership yesterday, and they, they weren't, they didn't get back to me.
Their revenue and income for a family of four, I believe it's $80,000-something thousand, or it's higher than that, right? For a family of four, it's over 100. I guess, are you interested in what it translates in terms of rents?
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, what do we say for the rental units?
For the workforce housing.
I can certainly get any of those numbers.
Yeah.
Okay. Then my second question is, will we be able to get a copy of the MPV report?
Yes.
Yeah.
That's great.
And my, my final question is that I reviewed the environmental impact statement as part of, environmental assessment, I think, as part of your application to the Nassau IDA. And you had a, it mentions that there will be, stormwater will be contained onsite via infiltration structures. Can you explain what that means in layman terms?
Large concrete masonry vaults that'll be installed as we build a parking garage. And they'll be designed to hold excess water and lead them to the ground slowly over time. So they're huge, like huge concrete bats to hold water. And then they go into the ground as the ground's able to absorb it.
Got it. Okay, those are my questions. Thank you.
Peter, and thank you, thank you. It's a, it's a beautiful design, to say the least. My name is Mike Delory. I have quite a few questions. I'm comparing what I'm seeing today to the IDA application. And one of the statements says on page 25 of the IDA application that an economic study commissioned by the agency will be provided. Are you stating that the Nelson Pope Voorhees Economic Impact Study is the study that was commissioned?
No.
No.
No, so that, what that's a reference to is that the IDA has commissioned the study to be done by an economic analysis analyst, who basically looks at our numbers, our projected rents and construction costs, and then determines the need and the rightsizing of the pilot request. And that is currently under, that's being done right now. I think it's nearing conclusion. But, you know, we basically have to lay bare our numbers to the IDA's consultant. It's National Development Council. This is a company that is a not-for-profit that only represents municipalities and IDAs. So they're not, you know, part of the development community. They don't answer to us, they answer to the IDA. But we had to give them the information regarding all the cost, income, and expenses. And they're doing the analysis now.
They're more focused on the individual project than the tax break we're asking for as opposed to the impact on the city.
Well, that's correct, right.
They're two different studies. Our studies show the impact of the entire city. The one that's done by the IDA is so they can justify why it's appropriate, not appropriate to give us the tax relief we're asking for.
I understood.
Construction, the cost of financing, those sorts of things, to determine whether or not we're making a reasonable profit or excessive profit. If they consider it to be above reasonable, they will not grant the pilot.
Understood. Because I'm looking at the, the study right now, the summary of projected fiscal impacts on the I-STAR project, was known as Long Beach Wayfarer LLC. It was done by Camoin Associates. Will this council provide that impact study when it's completed?
That's the IDA.
Yeah, we're, we're not sure they're going to undertake that study. So I think they rely more on the National Development Report that they're getting, and we're providing our study for it.
You could have our study because. You could have our study because we, we've done it, we're glad for you to see it. With regard to the IDA's proprietary information, you have to ask them.
Okay, um, because what I'm looking at, and I think what's important to me and the com- the community is the, uh, so county payments, city of Long Beach payments, school district payments, because when I looked at the I Star project, first fifteen or so years actually cost the city of Long Beach money and they got lump sum ramp up near the end. I would like to see this type of layout, uh, in the very near future because that has a big impact on this, on the city.
Yeah, I, I, I think that.
We did show that in our slide format, but again, we, we, we increased the taxes by seven times the current, uh, tax immediately. I Star kept the taxes flat for fifteen years. If you look at what's on the screen now, you'll see from year one, we're already starting to ramp up and once we're in, one, once those condos go up, you've got three point five million, seven times the current land taxes. So for the first fifteen years, we'll be paying in approximately fifteen million dollars more than I Star was.
Yeah, the critical difference between the two is that that project was just a rental project, this is a condo and rental project. So the condominiums will pay real estate taxes as soon as they're completed and that's why you see that that chart looks so different with regard to this development as opposed to the I Star.
So when you start your construction, you have three buildings. Are you stating that you're going to start the condo buildings first and second and the rental third or?
We're gonna, we're gonna start, we're gonna start the rental building and the eastern condo building and then as soon as the eastern condo building, the infrastructure's up, we'll go to the western condo building for staging purposes. So the, the first, the rental building and the first condo will start immediately and the second one will be six to nine months behind, uh, the rental and the first condo building.
So the Riverside Boulevard condo and the Long Beach Boulevard rental are gonna start simultaneous?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting.
It's about staging of the cranes. We can't do both condos at the same time. We have to do the inside building and the rental on the east first and then we'll do the outside building on the west second.
Okay, now, in, on page twenty-four of the IDA, uh, application, in, in, lining up with this line up. I just, okay.
Twenty-four, Peter.
Um, in month thirty-one to thirty-six, it shows two hundred and fifty people or personnel and, and that seems to be the, uh, three hundred people seems to be the high end, uh, starting at, well, I'm sorry, month thirteen to eighteen, two fifty, and then it keeps going, the amount of personnel. I am curious to find out how these people will be getting to the site, where they're gonna be parking or?
We talked to the city about renting the property to the west of us, the foundation block and they seem to think we'll be able to park our construction vehicles there.
Oh, you've actually discussed this with the city?
Yes.
And remember, this, this project is going to take several years to, to complete, so it's gonna be spread out.
And the other thing to note is that we will be building a podium and parking first, so there will be parking available on that podium at some point, but, uh, evidently the city said we would be able to get parking on that, on the foundation block, uh, during the construction.
We are building a parking podium first, we'll have a thousand cars, was it?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna have over a thousand cars in our lot in time.
It's the first thing that we're building is a parking podium.
I just wanted to figure out the, uh, the design and the plan of the construction, the cranes, the trucks, the, the employees and the vehicles traveling back and forth to the site. You know, we went, we, we went through an Army Corps of Engineers project a couple of years ago with a lot of trucks, a lot of banging, um, things like that and we realized all construction has, you know, a little bit of noise, so.
I guess the good news is to the west of us is the foundation block, it's unapproved, the, to the, uh, south is the ocean. And then, uh, to the east is the Avalon and then across the street to the north is a, is a residential, but two, two sides it will be, are not too bad.
I know Karen, uh, asked for the Nelson Pope War's project report, I'd like to see that as well, so her and I can review that.
We'll get it this tomorrow and she can distribute it, is that the best way?
That would be fine. And could you go back to the, uh, I think this is my last question for now, um, there's others, but on the slide that shows the design of the building where you have Long Beach Boulevard.
Slide one, yeah.
And I'm just bringing, right there, yeah, I'm just bringing up a question that you may have heard already. The, the eastern wall of the building on the rental runs from the, I guess that's the boardwalk entrance, what's, what's the part in the green, is that sidewalk that runs, uh, north?
That's grass. Yeah, it's grass, grass sidewalk.
Okay, one person or a couple of people pointed out that this is a solid wall. Is there any way, or maybe it's not the?
It's, it's not a solid wall, that, that wall represents the two that was a parking garage, which is not a solid wall, it's gonna have decorative panels and be made to look architecturally pleasing, it's not a solid wall.
Okay, do you have a ground view?
We can get, we can get you that.
Street view, that?
Yes, we can get you that, but it's gonna be tastefully done, it's gonna look, it's not a solid wall.
Okay, because I'm sure you have it, you may have presented it in a different meeting, but I know that that was, uh, something I didn't see.
We'll get a few, we'll get a few.
Yep. Um, I think that's all my questions at this time, uh, Mr. Bendo?
Uh, okay, um, could you, so there's three buildings, uh, so four hundred and thirty-eight total, two hundred condos and two hundred and thirty-eight rentals, so I'm assuming the condos are split relatively evenly at about a hundred apiece?
Correct.
Okay, could you just give us a, some kind of indication on the mix of the units, like studios, one bedrooms, two, it's more, you know, what, what you're envisioning?
Yeah, so, so the, uh, mix for the rental would be a hundred and nine condos, condos are a hundred and thirty-two, two bedrooms and sixty-eight one bedrooms.
I'm sorry, I missed the first one, so.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two for, for the condo.
Yeah, two bedrooms. Sixty-eight one bedrooms.
A hundred and thirty-two, two-bedroom condo units. And sixty-two, one-bedroom condo units. Sixty-eight, one bedroom.
Sixty-eight, okay, and what about on the rentals?
The rentals are a hundred and nine, two bedrooms, ninety-nine, one bedrooms and thirty studios.
Okay, so, um, uh, so I'm assuming the, the studios and the one bedrooms in all likelihood, uh, are probably just single people and couples, uh, two bedrooms is the potential for children, so have you done as part of your analysis about how many people when, when the site is full, you know, fully occupied, about how many people this is adding to Long Beach?
We, we have, we have done it with regard to schoolchildren, how many net schoolchildren will end up in the two projects and when I mentioned earlier about the positive fiscal impact of the school district, that was taken into account the costs of those children. So yes, we've studied that and, uh, and we have a response to that, it's in the Nelson Pope and War his report.
Okay.
We, we suspect we'll get older people that may be snowbirds and go back and forth seasonally. We suspect we'll get young people from the city, either as a weekend home or a permanent home. And then you get a certain number of divorcees or widows or widowers who love the beach and want to be down here.
Okay, yeah, so that was sort of my follow-on now is, could you, and you sort of just addressed it, who your target customer is and then what do you anticipate the, the various, the condos selling for and the rentals renting for?
The condos are gonna be, uh, just under a million dollars to about a million two, a million two fifty and the rentals are?
Mid-twos to mid-four, one fours.
Yeah.
Mid-two thousands to the, to the mid-four thousands, four thousands.
Okay, good. Let's see, addressed my parking issue before, could you go back to the, uh, graph of the When you guys were doing the presentations at the civic meetings, you had a, a, a chart that showed, sort of showed the, the tax payment schedule over the, your proposed thirty-year period and I noticed it's, it's missing here, could, could, is it possible to get an updated version of that?
Uh, yes, yeah, we definitely have it, we just don't wanna put too much in this, so.
Okay, so, um.
These charts are, these, these lines are derived from those charts.
Right.
Just wanna see the numbers and you can see that on the left.
But, but a ballpark in the very beginning, the condos are three point five and the rentals at land only would be two fifty, so it'd be three million seven fifty plus or minus at the very beginning and then it will incrementally go up when the, uh, when we start phasing in the full tax on the rental as well as the appropriate inflation adjustment each year that we will be giving you on the taxes.
Right, so you were proposing on the, on the, for a thirty-year pilot, that the, uh, rentals would start phasing in in a, in year eleven.
Right, and only for ten years and then phase in year eleven.
Right, so I'm, I'm kinda looking at this graph and I'm looking for an inflection point about year eleven and it's pretty, um, I mean, I guess that you could argue there's one there, but, um, so it, can you sort of?
It's, it's a thirty-five million dollar addition on the rental that, that gets added over that period.
I, I get, I get that over the thirty-year period, yeah, no, I, I understand that. I, I guess what I'm trying and the chart would.
Over twenty years.
Right, the chart would have helped, what I was trying to gauge was how the, uh, because this graph really doesn't show you how the rental taxes start kicking in because here the, it's, it's a fairly linear curve, so it, it doesn't look like the rental is having a, a significant impact on the taxes.
It starts by a five percent a year in year eleven, so that's why it wouldn't be a huge, but we can send you a schedule.
Yeah, that would be great, that's what I was looking for, okay.
It's not a straight line, you can see the.
That's what I mean, but I'm just trying to, you know, uh, here I'm trying to eyeball it, you know, versus the chart would just tell me.
John, um, can, can you please clarify on this chart if this, this includes county, school and city taxes though?
Yeah. This is everything.
Can we just see a version for what this, the impact would be for city taxes only?
We'll give you that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's, um, fellow. I sent you guys something and I think once we get a lot of that, what we just asked for, we can do a, a pretty good analysis.
Okay, thank you.
And the War his report will show the impact of sales tax revenue each year, which will be substantial, so which the city gets a, a good portion of that, I think.
Hmm, no.
Uh, I, I haven't had a chance to look, I guess, so there was an environmental assessment done or was it environmental impact statement or just like an environmental assessment?
Assessment form.
Okay.
It's a big, it's as of right.
So, and forgive me, I, because like I said, I haven't looked at it yet, I, I haven't seen it, um, does it address things like the ability of the water system to take up the capacity for the new units and, uh, even things like, let's use, say, the parking at the Long Island Railroad Garage for people that may commute because the garage is pretty much already at capacity?
People are gonna walk in, less than a half a minute.
We, the reason for the water and sewer upgrade that the I Star guys were doing is it benefits everybody, but that, that was done, uh, to make sure there wouldn't be an impact on the water and sewer, so that's kind of impressed that one. Um, we suspect a lot of people will not leave the car at the station or the water will take over.
Right, but, but what I was trying to ascertain and you, you may not have the answer to this, but, so if, if you add four hundred and thirty-eight units and then a couple of blocks down, I know this is separate from you and not, you know, you have no dealings with this, but then we have another project being proposed on a former school site, just a few blocks down from you on the water. What I guess I'm trying to ascertain as a capacity is if the city has to start, like for example, add a well, add a well or two to the system to address the capacity, um, that's a cost to the city, a significant cost to be able to meet the, the, the water demand for the site, that's, so that's why I was wondering if your environmental assessment covers something like, are the city's current wells adequate?
It's a.
We, we believe for our project it is adequate, we don't know about someone else's project, we've been told our project will not overtax that.
Uh, John, John, it, it, the environmental assessment does say that the total anticipated water usage demand per day is one hundred twenty-two thousand. Um, it also says that the city is, um, the city, um, building department, the DPW, water sewer, all have to give approval, um, for this plan and then, or they have to approve the application and that was supposed to be done in April or May of twenty twenty, according to the assessment, so I don't, I don't know if that's happened.
Right, but, but it's, it's not, I didn't only, it's not just a capacity issue from a, you know, can the wells meet the volumetric demand, but we also have an issue here in Long Beach where we're starting to have an issue with saltwater intrusion, so the extra demand on the wells, you know, uh, how does that impact the saltwater intrusion issue we're dealing with a, as well, uh, because again, if we have to.
We have to go to America.
Yeah, if we have to go to some kind of desalination for brackish water, again, that's a, that's a major infrastructure issue.
Well, uh, Councilman, uh, President Bendo, you know, what I would say is, you know, you know, and I think we've said this in some of the, uh, community meetings, you know, this project can't solve every problem in the city, but with this project, we'll do, we'll create a revenue stream that will allow the city hopefully to be in a better position to start trying to address some of these long-term, you know, citywide infrastructure issues. Um, you know, I, this is not going to, you know, to the extent that this is going to be drawing on those infrastructure, uh, you know, capacities, that has been looked at and, you know, that's one of the reasons for the five million dollar upgrades is necessary.
Okay.
The benefit of the project's going to be, right now this thing's been vacant land for forty years for doing nothing, uh, certainly the, uh, you know, the revenues can be produced here is gonna far exceed any incremental cost to the city, according to the reports and even just logically.
Okay, um, and then I guess, uh, for now, my final question, uh, from beginning to end, how long do you anticipate the construction phase of this lasting?
Six months.
Four, forty-eight months.
It's gonna be approximately forty-eight months.
Forty-eight months.
Okay. Now, how long, uh, obviously you, since you're doing the building in phases, uh, when, do you anticipate the rentals, uh, being completed first then, you know, CO or the, or the condos first?
The rentals of the first kind of building will probably be similar, uh, and the other one will probably be nine months to a year behind it.
So you anticipate, what, maybe thirty-six to forty months on the con, one condo building and the rental?
Sort of than that, yes. Sort of than that, a little bit sooner.
Sort of than that, maybe thirty-six months.
Right, sooner than that, you know, you know, we have to build tremendous infrastructure with that parking garage, right, it's a two-story concrete structure and, um, you know, we have to do the piles, so it takes a little bit more time than, than a typical construction, you know, uh, site we take.
So right now, you know, we are under tremendous time pressure, we have a contractor at I Star and they're, you know, they, you know, we can all together get I Star out of the picture, you know, I think it's a, a good thing and let this development go forward. Um, we have time and considerations there, we also have expended a lot of money to get to this point and we gotta get this project going this year, um, if it's gonna make sense.
If we don't close this year, they, they, they'll admit it.
Yeah, so.
So we should be in the ground the end of the year.
And that means really we have to move forward, we, we have to know that we have the assistance of the IDA and we have the, you know, support of, of the city and that that this thing can become a reality because, um, you know, it really is Fisher cut big time for us and for everybody, this thing's gonna become a reality.
Because the IDA approval is a condition of the contract and it was, it's actually due.
And that's really why, as I say, to reiterate it, that we are asking for the minimum that's necessary to make this work. Because of the condos, this becomes a big positive, uh, revenue situation for the city and school district. Um, for us, we can live with that, but we, on the rental portion, we just need to phase in the new taxes, we're creating, we just need to phase them in over this period so that the whole property and all these, um, tremendous costs can be penciled out and finally financed. And, uh, you know, we're, I, I'm, you know, proud to be part of this team to the extent these guys are still willing to make this commitment to do this project, even given all the uncertainty that's there right now and they've been putting their money where they're. even given all the uncertainty that's there right now. And they've been putting their money where their mouth is, you know, to keep this project moving forward, even through this whole crisis we've all been through.
Does this project also require commitment from our school district? Do you require, require a letter from the school board?
No, no. No, we don't anticipate a lot.
Our project is a matter of right. We can ask for a building permit. We already have met with the building department. They've already approved our site plan and they've already gone through the plans to the extent that they said no variances are required. So all we are requiring really to get a building permit is to give them a set of plans that are built, you know, that are built to code. Um, the only thing left that we have to do outside of that is this IDA. And, um, again, we're, we're on a very tight schedule to get that. It was supposed to have been done because of the pandemic, we got a bit of a, a breather. Um, but that's the only thing that's left. Otherwise, otherwise, everything we're doing is compliant with zoning and compliant with your code.
Thank you.
Um, Peter or David, um, I know you're under the gun, but as fast as you can get us the information we asked for, we'll review, we'll turn around and review it. Um.
Yeah.
As you know, we have fiscal issues and as I'm sure you're aware, this tax schedule going forward over twenty or thirty years is extremely important to us. That's why we want to look it over, because when I compare the I-STAR project, I don't want to, I do not want to see back-ended payments at the tail end where it should be even on a, an escalating basis annually.
I, I, I think that the Nelson and Pope and Boris report, you'll, you'll find very interesting. It's, it's very detailed. Uh, discusses both the costs of the project and the benefits of the project. And I, I think you'll find it very helpful in, in your understanding what this is going to bring to the city.
And, and the. Does it ripple affect a new construction like this? You know, people will start to spend more money on the surrounding homes and buildings as well. They'll upgrade them and also increase tax revenue as well. It'll increase values. Um, you know what happens when something like this gets done. We did the awkward, we saw it happening around us. You know, people started reinvesting in that area of town, of the city. And you'll see the same thing here with a project of this magnitude.
On the Nelson Pope and Boris report, is that something we could also make available to the public to see if we put it up on a, say, the city website? Is that, would that be acceptable?
I think we just need to discuss it with them, but it actually is something we're going to be submitting to the IDA also. So it is going to be public record and, and I anticipate, shouldn't be any issue with that whatsoever.
Okay, because it's obviously, the, the public's obviously curious about it, too.
Sure.
Okay, anybody else have any questions? Our city manager, you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay.
I want to review the reports that they're going to send to us. And understand the tax implications against our, uh, multi-plan budgets.
Correct. Well, yeah, we need to see how this all fits together to another piece of the puzzle. Okay, uh, I guess.
We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate you listening and, uh, we, we hope you'll find as we do that this is going to be a wonderful project for everybody.
Okay, uh, and, uh, along with the report, are, are you okay with us putting these slides up, uh, for the public to be able to see them?
I think so.
Yeah, he answers yes.
Okay, because I mean, they're wa, they're watching now anyway.
Yeah, that's fine.
He answers yes. He answers yes.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, all right, guys.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night. Have a good evening. All right, bye-bye.
Thank you, Nolan. Good job.
Nolan, we appreciate this.
Okay, so, are we still live, Dave?
Yes, yes, we're still live.
So, um, all right, so hopefully they're going to get us that, that information shortly so we could start looking at it as well. And the reason I was asking about some of those infrastructure questions, I realize what goes on at Halb is not the concern of Engel Berman, but as collectively as a city, this all impacts the infrastructure as a whole. So if we only look at a project on a case-by-case basis and not how various things being proposed at the same time might impact us collectively, that, that could create problems for us down the line. So that's why, for example, okay, fine, in its current form, the wells may be able to accommodate it, but now when you also include Halb and, uh, if, if the kitty condo block, anything happens there or the foundation, uh, uh, block at some point, something may happen there. And we're also wrestling with the potential saltwater intrusion. So there may again be capacity from the volumetric being able to provide the water. But if it's going to increase the saltwater intrusion, then there's expensive measures that have to be taken to deal with that. That's, that's why I was bringing that up. So I'm going to, uh, we'll, we'll go through their environmental statement, uh, or assessment and see. Uh, same with parking at the Long Island, you know, again, minor thing, but if you're a person that parks at the train station like I am, you know, the station's at capacity now. If you try to get on a train past eight AM, the parking lot is full. So if we're adding four hundred and thirty-eight units, I, I know they say they think people will walk and I agree generally, but four hundred and thirty-eight units, we're probably looking at a thousand people, you know, and some of those people are not going to drive, so, I mean, not going to walk. Some of them are going to want to park. So, um, not, again, not necessarily Engel Berman's problem per se, but it, it certainly impacts us potentially if we again have to do some kind of parking expansion. So, uh, you know, like I said, we have to look at the, uh, the supplemental impacts of this as well that, uh, they may not have. Okay, well, it looks like they're bringing in, they're looking to bring in some high-dollar people clearly with the rents and the, uh, I'm, I'm guessing, uh, I mean, I don't know, I, I guess if they're wealthy, I don't know how many retirees are gonna, gonna pay four thousand dollars a month in rent. But, uh, so I'm guessing this is more for the, uh, the, um, the people maybe living in Brooklyn and Manhattan who work, you know, in tech or Wall Street and make a lot of money and are willing to commute an hour to, uh, uh, on the train and to be able to live right on the beach.
Then it'll be changing to the way people work.
Well, that, that's a very good point. Uh, right.
Their office.
Right, that's a very good point. Their home may become their office and what better office than if they can sit on a balcony and stare at the ocean while they're working all day? Um, something be said for that. So. All right, so I guess, and they're looking, they're going to start the eastern condo building and the rentals simultaneously. Those will take about thirty-six months. And then they're going to, they'll start the, uh, the western condo. What do you say? About, uh, nine months, nine to twelve months after that, so about forty-eight months total. All right.
I, I also, I, I just wanted to point out that, um, in the, uh, in their application, they noted that our, the construction hours based upon the city of Long Beach Noise Control Ordinance, uh, Ordinance indicates it's eight AM to eight PM, Monday through Friday. It's eight AM to eight PM on Saturday. Sunday is twelve PM to eight PM and holidays are twelve PM to eight PM. You know, that, that's a lot, that's a lot of hours for people over, you know, four years of construction to varying degrees, so.
Yeah, Karen.
For us to think about the quality of life, you know, we've all been through so much.
Karen, I didn't bring that up. I, I saw that and what concerned me, I think, not more the starting time, because I think it's all eight AM, but up until eight o'clock at night, that's kind of too much if you're, if you're pounding and, and banging and all of that noise. It comes to a point when there's interior work, which I don't think is noisy. But I think that's something that we really should think, think about.
Yeah, I mean, the bulk of the, what you were talking about, the pounding, that kind of, the site work, that's the stuff that would probably be the, the noisiest. So that would be the piles. You know, any excavating they have to do at a site, leveling, grading, that kind of stuff. But, uh, you know, we could.
John, I'm sorry, even when the, um, the previous, uh, construction company was pounding maybe ten or fifteen pilings at that site, people were complaining on Broadway, on Penn, um, about the noise and the vibration.
Do they, usually they put in, uh, like with the Army Corps, they put in the vibration monitors in people's apartments so that they're, they can't exceed those things, otherwise they get fined, so.
All right, so we could ask about that. They're going to do vi, vibration monitors. And we could check with the, uh, with the building department. I mean, I don't, I don't know if they anticipate working seven days a week. You know, we, we can, we can try to get a work schedule, uh, out of them just to find out.
And Sean, the other thing that I, I, we came up with, either they say they're going to enter into an agreement or there's some kind of available using the parking lot to the, the, uh, west of Riverside Boulevard, you know, the.
That's the foundation block.
Foundation block. They were talking about having their workers and stuff park on the foundation block.
Is that something they can just do or they have to?
Well, they'd have to work that out with the owners of the foundation block. That's not a city-owned lot, so.
Right.
So whoever owns, they'd have to work that out with the owners of the foundation block.
Right. Okay, yeah, because that's not a given. We can't, we don't have control over that.
No, we don't. So, all right, uh.
Can I make a recommendation or a suggestion? So we can have a special seven-thirty council meeting? If there's no other things that we're going to talk about, can we take a, a break? And.
Reconvene at seven-thirty?
And reconvene, is that?
That's fine.
Can we do that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you. Be back at seven-thirty?
All right, we'll talk.
Seven eighty-nine, Liz.
We'll see you in twenty-four minutes.
Okay. Bye.
I have to get a quick, uh, what did you say? A spa treatment, John? Yeah, right.
Just, just to announce to the public before we, uh, go off the stream, folks, it'll, it'll be a separate stream that'll be listed on the YouTube page. So this stream will end and then there will be, there will be a new stream, uh, for the public on YouTube that will be labeled special city council meeting. Uh, council members, stay on this meeting. Uh, we're, we're not going to end this meeting.
No, I'm not leaving. I mean, I'm leaving.